I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Very fortunate this evening and appreciative we have Reverend Ross Halbersama from New Hope Alliance Church to deliver our invocation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Will you stand, please? Let us pray. Almighty God, the Creator of the universe, the one who is all-knowing and omniscient, you so tenderly care for us and you love us. We give thanks for those who have served in leadership prior to this current board. They laid foundation. Today, this board serves as a link between the yesterdays and the tomorrows. May they adjudicate well their roles. May that which needs to be said be said graciously. May that which need not be said not be said. Recognizing that ultimately we've given account to you for our words, thoughts, and actions in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Schumloch, you leave the pledge, please.
I ask that remain standing and face the flag of our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Option of the agenda, are there any proposed changes?
We have none, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
To approve as presented, a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We'll adopt the agenda as presented. Citizen comments, agenda items only, not subject to public hearing. Did anyone sign up?
We had no one sign up, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. That will bring us to the consent agenda.
Move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
To approve as presented, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda is approved as submitted. Mr. Chairman Lofton, if you would join me, please. Mr. Spaniel, if you'd join us, please.
This is a resolution with appreciation for Serena R. Rennie Manuel. Whereas Serena R. Rennie Manuel served Frederick County, Virginia for approximately 27 years as an employee at the Winchester Regional Airport. And whereas Rennie Manuel began her career as an office assistant in 1991 and received promotions to assistant airport manager and interim airport director before her appointment as airport director in 1999. Whereas during her tenure, Rennie Manuel progressively took on a variety of additional responsibilities and assignments and was noted for incredibly unusual work ethic, diligence, and efficiency. And whereas Rennie Manuel served as secretary on the Virginia Airport Operations Council, whereas Rennie Manuel was widely recognized as one who could be depended upon to help others in a time of need and one whose sense of humor was appreciated by all. Whereas Rennie Manuel was an effective leader and team member who excelled at managing numerous capital and airport redevelopment projects, including runway rehabilitation design and construction, an airfield lighting upgrade, T-hanger apron rehabilitation, land acquisition, relocation and rehabilitation of taxiway A, and oversight of construction of a second corporate hangar facility. Now therefore be it resolved that the Frederick County Board of Supervisors extends its sincerest thanks to Serena R. Rennie Manuel for her dedication and dependability and wishes her all the best in her future endeavors. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Frederick County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the accomplishments of this public servant. Adopted the 12th day of September, 2018. Please join me in congratulating and thanking Rennie for her many years of dedicated service.
Board of Supervisors comments, are there any? Thank you. We'll bring us to committee appointments. Extension Leadership Council, Red Bud?
Still working on it, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Planning Commission Member-at-Large, we have an application. We'll have it before us at our next meeting. The Winchester Regional Airport Authority, I'm recommending the application of Joseph Bailey, which is in your agenda.
Second, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry?
Is that a motion?
We'd make it a motion.
Then that'll be a second.
In a second. So is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Joseph Bailey is appointed to the Winchester Regional Airport Authority. Shenador Area Agency on Aging?
Mr. Chairman, we do have an application pending and it should be in your agenda at your next meeting.
Thank you very much, sir. Good news. Shawnee Land Sanitary District, are we ready?
Mr. Chairman, no, I'm not ready to make the smart shot.
Right, sir. Thank you very much. That'll bring us to a request from the Commissioner of Revenue for refunds. Supervisor Slaughter or Chris?
I've got it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
This is a refund to Toyota Lease Trust in the amount of $3,713.60 for personal property tax for 1718 and vehicle license fees for 18. This has been reviewed and consented to by the county attorney and is ready to go.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion to approve the refund and also the supplemental appropriation to Toyota Lease Trust in the amount of $3,713.60.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. We'll bring us to a discussion of the General Assembly Legislative Agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. What you have before you tonight in your agenda packet was a proposed 2019 legislative agenda. Since the agenda went out, I had a phone call from a board member that asked for an addition to what was in your packet, so there's a new copy at the dais before each board member. The one addition that got added was a suggestion dealing with Medicaid expansion and where the county would support seeking full reimbursement for the local share of any additional administrative costs associated with Medicaid expansion. That's about a $250,000 cost in local dollars to Frederick County, so that's the one addition that was not included in what went out in your agenda packet. What staff tried to do with input from board members is to identify and put together our annual legislative agenda. We have identified five priority items for the 2019 session. The priority number one would be reconsideration of Senate Bill 549 regarding proffers. Item number two dealt with tax exemptions and supporting reverting the authority to localities to continue existing tax exemptions previously granted by the General Assembly for those exemptions granted prior to January 1, 2003. In the past several years, we have worked with Delegate LaRocque on various legislative proposals to try to make that a reality and we will continue to do that this year. Item number three is equal taxing authority for counties eligible for city status, which is what Frederick County would qualify. But specifically or further in that proposal, we are also seeking legislation to provide local specific taxing authority to increase taxes on meals and transient occupancy tax without legislative imposition of mandatory specific uses of the realized gain in revenue. You might recall, a couple of years ago, we got special legislation to increase our cap on the lodging tax, but anything above that cap is specifically designated to go to supporting tourism. So if we were to, you know, seek legislation to increase that taxing authority, we would like to see that restriction taken away so we could have more flexibility with that revenue. Item number four is funding for transportation improvements and also seeking help from the General Assembly relative to the I-81 issue. And finally, item number five is fully funding the Virginia Standards of Quality as recommended by the Board of Education and the Standards of Accreditation and that we would fully support reinstatement of the cost of competing adjustment for teachers and support staff and support the exclusive use of state lottery proceeds to fund public education. We have a number of other positions that have been identified as well. What staff is seeking tonight would be an endorsement of the board of this legislative agenda. We will then communicate that with our legislators down in Richmond. This is not the final or end-all of our legislative agenda. Typically during the process, staff monitors specific bills and if there are items of interest that maybe we have not identified in our draft or our initial round of legislation, we will bring those to the board and seek resolutions of support or resolutions of opposition and communicate that to the General Assembly as well.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Mr. Tibbs? Comments or discussion? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, item number three, equal taxing authority. I would like to know if it's possible to separate the first part where it addresses legislation that would provide equal taxing authority to counties throughout the state based upon population density. As we know, things that are statewide sometimes tend to be very contentious and it kind of loses focus. And I'd like to see if we could separate that from the Frederick County specific legislation that we're asking for so as to help the legislators not conflate the two and give further emphasis to the fact that Frederick County desires legislation to provide us local specific taxing authority. I think by separating those two, we can drive home the point a little clearer, a little louder, because again, other legislation, if we get tied in, and not that I don't support, I do, a statewide legislation to provide their taxing authority, but I just think unless we separate these two, that we're going to get lost in the noise. And so that's why I would tend to ask if we could separate the, maybe 3A being Frederick County and 3B being statewide.
I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that. Does anyone have an objection?
That's fine.
I'll support that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Other thoughts? Comments? Are we happy with it otherwise?
Aye.
Ready to authorize staff to move forward? Do you need formal action?
A motion would be good to have, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir.
I motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented with the addition of the Medicaid reimbursement.
Second.
And the second is for further discussion.
And with the adjustment for what Mr. Lofton's?
The adjustment, 3A, 3B?
Yes, 3B.
Okay. Motion intended?
Yes.
Second intended?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And thank you. That will bring us to amendment to the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget, public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request for an appropriation in the amount of $9,370,435.09. And these funds are additional funding needed for the Tevis Street I-81 Bridge project. I would point out that there are no local funds here. All these funds are coming from either VDOT through their revenue sharing program or matching funds through the developer who owns the property where the roads will be constructed because of the amount of the appropriation of public hearing is required. And Mr. Bishop is here if there's detailed questions about the road project itself.
Any questions of Mr. Tierney or Mr. Bishop? Anyone? All right. Says a public hearing, would anyone like to comment concerning this proposed budget amendment? Anyone? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment portion. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we amend the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget to, yeah, approve the supplemental appropriation in the amount of $9,370,435.09 for additional funds for the I-81 Bridge slash Tevis Roundabout slash Airport Road slash Northern Y Project.
Thank you, sir. Sir, second?
Second.
In this section, is there any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarty?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. All right. That will bring us to Planning Commission Public Hearings, conditional use permit 09-18. Mr. Klein?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. This is a conditional use permit which was submitted for the establishment of a special event center in the RA Rural Area Zoning District. The location of this property is at 233 Burnt Factory Road in the Stonewall Magisterial District. It's identified with parcel identification number 55-A-152. And again, the property is owned RA Rural Areas. The current land use is residential. It also includes wooded and forestal area. And the proposed use is a special event facility for weddings and other similar type events. Directing your attention to the screen, the subject properties owned by the applicants are highlighted in blue. The parcel subject to the conditional use permit is the main parcel here. It's bound to the north by Pine Road and to the east by Burnt Factory Road. This is a 45-acre piece of property that contains a single-family residence, a detached garage, a tennis court, and has a gated private entrance and driveway. The applicant's conditional use permit application proposes use of temporary tents for special events, the bringing in of outside portable restroom facilities, outside catering with no onsite kitchen facilities and no alcoholic beverage sales onsite, and a designated gravel parking area for up to 100 vehicles. Special events may accommodate up to 200 people. Again, this is the illustrative sketch plan provided by the applicant. To orient you to the site, we have Pine Road to the north of the site and Burnt Factory Road to the east. The existing gated private access driveway will serve as the entrance to the special event facility. Again, the driveway passes the existing home and where the current tennis court is located, that is the event area that the applicant is proposing to allow for use of tents during special events, and they will be providing a designated gravel area for parking. I will note that the event center location on their property is more than 600 feet from Burnt Factory Road, more than 600 feet from the western property boundary, more than 1,000 feet from Pine Road, and more than 700 feet from the southern property boundary. And again, the applicant does own the parcels to the south of the lot subject to the special event facility. This proposed conditional use is consistent with our 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which supports opportunities for rural businesses. And the applicant has addressed all review agency comments, including those related to site access, compliance with our Building Health and Fire Safety Codes, and the proposed use is generally consistent with the county's zoning policies and regulations. Should the Board of Supervisors find this use to be appropriate, the Planning Commission recommended the following conditions. Number one, that all review agency comments be complied with at all times. That an illustrative sketch plan in accordance with the requirements of the Frederick County zoning ordinance shall be submitted to and approved by Frederick County prior to the establishment of the use. That an engineered commercial entrance site plan be submitted to and subject to approval by VDOT prior to the establishment of the use. And that entrance to the subject property be limited to the existing private and gated access from Burnt Factory Road. That the applicant shall post a sign along their driveway to direct traffic southbound or a right turnout only from the subject property onto Burnt Factory Road. That events shall start no earlier than 10:00 a.m. with all music concluding by 10:00 p.m. and all events and related activities concluding by 11:00 p.m., sorry. That events may accommodate up to and not to exceed 200 persons. That the applicant be allowed one monument-style sign with a maximum sign area not to exceed 50 square feet and not to exceed 10 feet in height. And that any expansion or modification of this use would require the approval of a new conditional use permit. The Planning Commission at their September 19 meeting recommended approval of this conditional use permit with revised conditions. The revised conditions address discussion among the Planning Commission and sought to address concerns raised by those who spoke at the public hearing. Following a public hearing this evening, staff is seeking a decision by the Board of Supervisors on this proposed conditional use permit for the special event facility. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And the applicants, Ms. Carrie Myers and Mr. Matthew Gambino, are also here this evening and I believe they have a few remarks.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Mr. Klein? Supervisor Dunn?
The place where they're doing this, is that next to the tennis court?
I believe it's on the site of the existing tennis court.
Okay, so that puts me on that. Got a couple of questions. If they did not do a CUP, but they just had a, if they just decided to have an event for the heart association or the cancer association and invited 200 people there as a fundraiser, would they need a CUP to do that?
If they're the ones hosting the event, no. If they were renting the space, then yes, they would need a CUP for a special event facility.
So they would have to have a CUP if they're going to receive money for something that they did?
Yes, correct.
Could they do a festival permit or something like that where they did it one or two or three times a year, receive money for that?
As you are aware, the change to add special event facilities as a conditional use was in order to address the festival permit option that we previously allowed. A festival permit would be for like a one-off type event where a conditional use permit would allow for a series of events throughout the year.
And last question, Mr. Chairman, is the CUP could be restricted by the number of events for a year, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Other questions of Mr. Klein? Seeing no one? Thank you, sir. Ms. Myers, Mr. Gambino, if there are anything you all would like to add, please come forward.
Good evening. So our property is in total 69 acres. It is our only home and we do live there and will be living there full-time for as long as we're alive. We put a contract on the property in late March of 2017 and we have been living there full-time since we closed on the house on June 1st of the same year. We are both employed full-time. Matt is a professional firefighter and I am a full-time high school teacher. So because we are both employed full-time with jobs that do require early mornings, we do understand the concerns about quiet hours and noise and limitations on days. We have both fallen in love with our house and with the property that it sits on and we want to be able to share what we consider to be a really special place with others while being able to have the land work for us and to generate income that will allow us to preserve and protect the entire property for years to come. We intend to have the wedding venue that would allow us to be good stewards of both the land and our neighborhood. We believe that we have shown good faith so far in this end by readily agreeing to the limitations that were discussed and added during the Planning Commission meeting and we certainly intend to honor that spirit. Two of the consistently voiced concerns that we have heard are traffic on Pine Road and potential noise issues. We took those very seriously and we have given consideration to those particular concerns. So as Mr. Klein has already indicated, the entrance to our property is on Burnt Factory Road. Burnt Factory Road off of Route 7 is the most direct route to our property. There is no access to our land from Pine Road and we have no intention of adding such an entrance ever. The property is heavily wooded on, well, everywhere, but particularly on that side and it would make no sense to explore adding an entrance to the property on that side. Our existing driveway does need to be changed to meet VDOT's requirements for a commercial entrance, which just simply entails widening the driveway by a few feet and also clearing some of the trees and underbrush to improve the sightlines in both directions on Burnt Factory. None of these changes specifically to the driveway will have a significant impact on the appearance of our gated entrance and certainly those changes would have no impact to the residents on Pine Road. Additionally, as we indicated in the amendment application, will include signage directing people to exit our driveway to the right, which would put them onto Burnt Factory Road directly heading to Route 7, and that will reduce the likelihood of Pine Road being impacted for those limited hours on the weekends when there would be events scheduled. We understand another concern for sure for the residents of Pine Road is potential noise. We have thought about it, we have walked our property, and we do believe that the heavy forestry that is on our land, much of which is evergreen, as well as the dense underbrush throughout the property, will limit any noise that would carry from the location on the tennis court, which is beside our home, to the homes on Pine Road as well as Burnt Factory. So of the total 69 acres that we own, all but seven of them are classified in forestry use. There are no plans to amend that and there is no plan to timber that. We don't have enough mature trees that that's a possibility, so there will be no thinning of the trees. Of the specific 45 acres that are addressed here, 38 of them are classified in forestry. The property is also contoured with hills. We have very limited actual flat space, which also helps with noise reduction. And currently engagements would be tented with the commercial-type tents and those certainly do help to contain noise to some degree. And we would be very vigilant about placement of any sound systems to direct sound away from the direction of the Pine Road side of the property. And again, the amendments to the application from the Planning Commission hearing, we're perfectly happy to limit events to weekends as well as end any music by 10 and certainly have all guests off the property by 11. So we very much appreciate your consideration of our application and the time that has invested in us and we certainly hope that we'll be able to keep our historic property in the pristine condition that it is with the revenue that could be generated by this opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Myers, Mr. Gambino? Anyone? Supervisor Dunn?
You have a nice piece of property, so I commend you on that. How many times do you think you expect to have weddings over the course of a normal year or approximately what range of, you know, numbers would that be?
So I don't know that I can give a specific answer to that question. I think what I can say is that we have no intention of having more than one event in a weekend in that Friday, Saturday, Sunday timeframe. That's just not, we don't want to pack weekends with multi-events. It's just not the kind of service that we would like to offer.
Just one follow-up question. I understand this is designed primarily for weddings and so I'm going to assume that it's going to be a lot warmer than colder when you have that. So if you assume that weddings begin in April for warmer months and they run through November, et cetera, in that type of a timeframe, do you have an idea of how many you'd like to have or is there a limit where you'd like to keep it open? I'm just asking this question.
I guess my initial response is I'd like to keep it open only because I can't specifically say.
Okay, that's fair.
Again, being that I am a teacher, you know, I can say that it would be difficult to do something every weekend because teaching is a very full-time job.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor McCarthy?
Thank you. Ms. Myers, you had mentioned that currently events would be tented. Does that mean that at some point you anticipate having a permanent facility of some type there for events?
So originally on the property, we have been told by several sources that there was a barn and that barn stood where the existing tennis court is, again, being one of the few flat spots. We had always had the intention that somewhere down the road, we'd like to restore the barn and put the property back to as close to original condition as we could. So I can't say that there is any immediate plan on that. So I can't say that there is any immediate plan on that for availability reasons, resource reasons, but in the future, if we could, you know, return a barn to that original spot, we would like to pursue that and whatever would need to be done to do that.
And you had mentioned that your intention is to use this as a way to sort of supplement your ability to maintain the property in its current condition and be able to share it with others. That being the intent, would you have any qualms with limiting the CUP to the time that you own this property and at that point it expiring?
Just to clarify, you mean when we sell the property, the CUP does not convey with it? We have no problems with that whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning this proposed CUP? Anyone at all? Thank you, sir. If you would share your name, Magisterial District, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Norman Lamson. My property is in Stonewall, Magisterial District. I live in Charlottesville.
Yes, sir.
Can you get the time here? I, I own the 45-acre tract immediately to the west of the applicant's property, and it's been in my family since 1963. That's 55 years, so I'm very familiar with both of these properties. I speak in opposition of the application, and that's in total opposition. It cannot be tweaked so as to have a use that does not adversely affect surrounding properties under the zoning ordinance, and so I disagree with Mr. Klein and his presentation. It will adversely affect it, and that's primarily by the noise. He says it's 600 feet. Yes, it is. It's 629 feet, so that's about two football fields. And noise carries, the application says outdoors slash tented for, you know, bad weather, but this is an outdoor facility. Now, noise just carries. It's hills, the woods aren't going to stop it. You know, the guy's going to say, kiss the bride, and there's going to be shouting, clapping, clapping on the back, champagne, you know, bottles popping. It's just going to make it unlivable for the adjoining people like myself. I'm in RA, but my southwest corner is, adjoins the urban development area. So this is all residences all around here. We're not way out in the country where they've got some big 1,000-acre tract and there aren't many houses around. And it's, I have a right, permitted use as single-family residences. I can divide into nine tracts, nine times five is 45, upright, or I can do a rural preservation where you take 60%, which would be a 27-acre tract. That would leave you with nine, two-acre lots. So I get a 10th lot for keeping a big open space. My property is just as good for residences as the 10 residences north of Pine Road that you saw on the Gambino property. It's gently rolling, et cetera. If you approve this, you're taking away my ability to develop this for residences, to sell it to a developer who would subdivide it, or for me to even live there. And so I oppose it. It cannot, there are no conditions under which it can be successfully maintained. It's also inconsistent with the zoning ordinance because that specifies it has to be in accordance with the established pattern of development, and that is residences. As you go up Woods Mill Road, big housing subdivision on the left, you take your right on Pine Road, all those houses across north of Pine Road, up a ways, there's Hots Pentecostal Church, and then a Methodist church, but there hasn't been any development other than residences. And this will interfere with use. So I live two miles from UVA. When the Fracs have a party, I can hear the noise two miles away, and it wakes me up. Unless you have any questions, I appreciate your giving me a say. I do have, if I can introduce these, they're just, there was an appraisal done in 2007. I have nine copies. I just want to show that there is corroboration that it can be developed into a development, and I just have some screenshots that show the residences on Pine Road. If I can...
If you would share those with...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tibbs? He'll distribute them for you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Well, can we let the young lady come? She was quicker than you were. We'll come back to you, sir. Could I have your name, Magisterial District?
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Heather Miller, and I too am in the Stonewall District, happen to be a resident there. I, along with many neighboring residents who are here in the crowd, also strongly object to this proposed event center. When I took a look at the county code, I do believe that this proposed special event center does not meet that criteria. In looking at that, I noted that the board shall consider standards which include that the conditional use permit shall not change the character and established pattern of development of the area, shall not adversely affect the natural character of the area, and should only be approved if adequate facilities, roads, safe access, and drainage are provided. Looking at the application for this, I noted that the event center would allow outside events to serve a maximum of 200 guests with 100 parking spaces, allow for consumption of alcoholic beverages that are brought into the facility, and would allow events that conclude by midnight. However, the special event center would be located in only 45 contiguous acres. The property in question is significantly smaller in acreage and in size than other special event centers throughout the state of Virginia, and those serve about the same or even less visitors in this proposed capacity. In fact, if you go right down the street, about two miles to the historical Jordan Springs Event Center, you will find that their center is located on over 237 acres of land and also includes indoor facilities to include a brick mansion and other permanent buildings. In contrast, this application includes a plan for solely outside events utilizing tents in that small tract to provide services for as many as 200 guests. This will clearly and substantially change the current and future character of nearby properties, which are all residential in nature. Additionally, due to the location on Burnt Factory Road, there is a substantial concern with safety. Both the primary routes access of Burnt Factory Road and neighboring Pine Road, which would need to be accessed for visitors to reach Route 7 East, are narrow, unlined, winding rural roads with no posted speed limit, no shoulders, and no street lighting. With the widths of these rural roads today, you may find even in the daylight, you may struggle to pass a vehicle, particularly if one is a bus or other large vehicle. Imagine if it's dark, raining, and you're not familiar with that road. Perhaps you're tired, it's midnight, and perhaps you've even had a glass of wine at a wedding. That sets us all up for significant risk, everyone that's using that local road. In closing, I strongly believe that this application should not be granted because the proposed use does significantly impact the health and well-being of us neighboring residents, and it also negatively impacts our property value and character. Finally, it does not align with the current pattern of development or use of neighboring lands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Ed Ward, and I live at 367 Pine Road across the street, and one good thing about coming here tonight is I get to meet all my neighbors at the planning zone. I'm opposed to the development, but before I say why, I want to welcome the Gambinos to the neighborhood. They've just shortly been here, and it's, it's great to have them as neighbors. Let me go over three points that I want to make in my three minutes here, and one is that if, in my opinion, if it was zone partial use, that would probably decrease the surrounding values of the property that is in the Gambinos. When we retired and moved out of New York City as retirees, we were looking for a rural center, setting with wildlife and all that, and fortunately we found it, and we really don't want to see that change. The other point I have was, that was previously mentioned here by the preceding person, was the width of Pine and the width of Burnt Factory Roads. I bring this up, it was previously explained that there is no center dividing lines. These roads are not really roads, they're country lanes. It was previously explained, there's no lighting, there's no center line. If you had 100 cars that were coming from Winchester to attend this event, the shortest distance is a, is Route 7 going east, a left turn on Woods Mill, and then a right turn on Pine. So I have 100 cars passing, going to the event. Coming from the event, the Gambino's point is well-taken. If they're going back to Winchester, it'd be a right turn out of their property on the Route 7, this time going westbound. But to attend the event, I got 100 cars passing through my door. The next point I wanted to make is why would you want to compete with an existing place that does almost the same thing like Jordan Springs, was previously mentioned, had indoors facilities, and they're always kind of hurting for money. They change hands pretty regularly, so I don't know whether that's a good, from a business standpoint, whether that's a good proposition, but that's in the Gambino's hands, not mine. The other thing, my final point is to be careful is what you wish for, because in the event of a major thunderstorm like we had last summer... Just give me a second.
Go ahead, go ahead, please.
The 200 invited guests, maybe uninvited guests, as the thunderstorm and winds come by takes the tents away, and the Gambinos find themselves with 200 people in the four chimneys property who are afraid to leave because of falling trees over the country lane, Burnt Factory, and possibly not the ability for emergency equipment to come to their rescue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Dawn Baker, and I lived at 425 Pine Road for 25 years with my husband, and I...
You just moved the microphone. There you go.
Right there?
Either way.
Okay.
Whatever.
All right. With my twins for the last 25 years. Along with our home, we also have a rental property that butts up to the Gambino property, and we use that rent money to put away for our children's college. And if we have the event center, our runner may move out, we may lose what rent we do get, and my children do not get to go to the colleges that they deserve to go to. And I need you to please respect the fact that Pine Road is very quite quiet and peaceful for all its residents. We do have our share, cars driving fast, and are very narrow, unmarked, and no speed signs and no street lights along the road. We also have dump trucks, tractor trailers from Great Falls Septic that come down and reside on Burnt Factory. Every Saturday evening in the spring and summer, we can hear Winchester Speedway, and if all this noise can reach from Route 50 all the way to our home on Pine Road, it's going to be a mess. We also have a lot of new, excuse me, we also have a lot of noise coming every day from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. off of Route 7. I had to, like, really cut this down. Also, there's no buffer zone. It's only yards, not acres, and the woods cannot buffer the noise of 200 people. Along with the noise, the problem is, of course, Burnt Factory Road being hazardous, and you can barely get cars in there, and I did Google Maps, and they gave me directions from Winchester, Virginia, and it brought everyone down our road, Pine Road. And so that concludes that we will have a very bad chance of someone being killed by a drunk driver as there will be alcoholic beverages allowed at all events. I now have two licensed teenagers, and they will be driving this road as well, and I am not very happy that this will be affecting their chances of coming home safely and the chance of being killed by a drunk driver on their own street. I'm not sure how the working people of Pine Road are going to be getting any downtime to sleep, relax, or go to bed early, because there will be 52 weekends when there is an event, and the event center will be taking out, will be taking our right to enjoy our property the way we always have. Living on Pine Road is a peaceful environment, and watching the wildlife go by is one of the best parts. We are considerate to our neighbors, therefore we don't mow our lawns early in the morning, and we don't have outrageous parties. Can I keep...
Go ahead and conclude.
Okay. So the residents are also worried about the water, having a large center like that put a stream on our facility, on our water table, and it would be a very bad burden on us if we have to re-get new wells drilled or whatever, they dry up. Let's see, I'll just get that, I'm just going to go right to the end if I can. To close this letter, I'm asking that you vote no for the CUP 0918 Myers-Gambino Proposed Special Events Facility. We may be few on this road, but we are deserving to having the peace and the quiet that we have been living with for many years. It would be a shame for the community to lose all of this due to the wants of two people and to have the people who are going to lose so much than what they will gain. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment? Yes, ma'am? I'll come back to you, sir.
I'm Cynthia Ward, and I also live on Pine Road. I just have one very simple comment, and that is that my understanding of the rural zoning change that permitted a event facility to be constructed or permitted on a rural-zoned area was for the purpose of agribusiness or agritourism, and as far as I can see, weddings and birthday parties have nothing to do with agritourism or agribusiness, and therefore this whole argument about approving it seems to me to be inconsistent with the zoning purposes that allowed for an event facility in the first place. So I am opposed to the approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Michael Balling. I'm the property owner at 111 Burnt Factory Road. I grew up there. I'm a graduate of James Wood High School, and I'd like to point out to the board that this property is in a special land use district that was formed to preserve the agricultural neighbor, character of the neighborhood. I feel that the establishment of a commercial enterprise in the neighborhood is inconsistent with the objectives of the residents who established the special land use district to maintain their rural environment and peace and quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I live on Burnt Factory Road. My property adjoins...
Magisterial District?
Doug Rollust, I'm sorry.
Stonewall.
Stonewall District, yeah.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And my property borders Matt and Carrie's property. I've met them when they first moved in. They seem like very nice people. I think they have good intentions. I don't have a problem with what they want to do. I've been down to the house, I've been, I've looked at the property, I've actually walked the whole property. I just don't see where it would be a problem with me. I'm only speaking for myself. I know other people have other objectives or different things, and that's fine. We all have different opinions. I personally don't have a problem with it, so...
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir?
Hello, my name is John Good, and Stonewall District. I live right across from Matt and Carrie's property. I took the time to go over and talk with Matt and Carrie and discuss other people's concerns as well as some of my own. I sort of played the devil's advocate to say, how would you handle this? What would you do to this situation? And so, you know, we had very good conversation, they're very, two nice, very great people. I'm all for it. I'm the, I almost thought I was the one and only, but, prior to the last speaker, but, you know, our road is not a peaceful neighborhood, as Dawn brought up a few things, Winchester Speedway, the sewage trucks that go by, you know, Route 7, gun shooting, there's some... There's so much gun shooting to my left and to my right, it's unbelievable, morning, noon, and night. So it's not peaceful like some people are trying to say, you know? And as far as kids, you know, we try and keep our neighbors' kids out of the road, because people really fly down our road, too. And you can see a certain section of the road where people burn out their tires, you know, leave black marks all over it. And so I don't know if it would be any less safe than it is. As far as noise, there's noise ordinance in the county. There's requirements you've got to meet, so I'm sure those will be met, or the police could be called, they'll come out and take care of it. I've had big parties at my house. I've had those visits. You turn things down, everything's good to go. And the other thing is, bear with me here, as far as the traffic, every Sunday morning, Burn Factory has two masses. I don't think we'll see any more traffic from their events than we do on Sunday morning of people going to church. And so I guess we should stop people going from church because of the traffic? I don't think that's going to happen. Yes, okay, they haven't been drinking, or hopefully they haven't been going to church. But, you know, I think Matt and Carrie will make sure people do not leave their property inebriated with a chance of getting arrested, causing an accident. You know, the unforeseen big rainstorm that comes, well, you know, that's an act of God. Nobody can plan or whatever, but yeah, they could probably have a backup plan of what could happen. I'm sure they'd probably take people into their houses if they had to. But, like I said, I don't see it being any more traffic than what it is on Sunday mornings. And it's only going to be twice. People are going to go in, and then people are going to leave. Now, yep, some people will trickle in a little later, leave a little earlier, but I think overall, you know, I just don't see a problem with it. And, well, my time's up.
If you had another point, you can conclude with it.
I just think it will be a good thing for our community, actually. I'd rather hear people celebrating, getting married, a child, having a birthday party, or whatever other joyous occasion might be that was really good, fundraisers for possibly cancer, heart association, than all the gun shooting I hear all the time. It doesn't bother me, but I just soon hear music instead. So I just think, you know, the reasonable people, if it weren't to work out, I don't think they would continue to do it and upset people. I really don't. And I just think it's worth a shot. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
You'll have to get pretty physical with it. You get it up, just stay up. There you go. Well done. All right, good evening. My name is Brian Hension. I live, well, actually, I own a piece of property directly across from the entrance that the Gambinos have on Burn Factory Road. I didn't come to the first meeting. I really thought it would be a slam dunk and no need. When I heard about all the opposition, found it necessary to come. I have no problems with their use permit. I bought my piece of property for hunting. I apologize for the gunshots. And if I'm not concerned about the hunting, then I don't think we can get too worried about the wedding activities. It's not going to affect my hunting and deer skittish, so that'll tell you something there. As far as the noise, I can sit out there and hear high school football games and the band practicing. So to be worried about a one weekend here and a one weekend there of some music or cheering, I don't see that being an issue. As far as the drinking, I've taken four loads of trash to the dump off my property of liquor bottles. So to think that drinking doesn't happen and it would start because of the wedding, that's not an issue. Obviously, it's going on, and my property can show for it. I think it's personally a great idea to have the option for some additional income. I would hate for them to have to sell a portion of their property to be able to maintain the rest of the property, because the way things have been going around us, it's going to be houses and a lot of them. So I'd much rather than preserve the property by having events on the weekends than having to sell a good portion to stay where they are. That's pretty much what I have. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to comment? You'll need to pull it back down. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Carol Vincent. I live in the Stonewall District also, 224 Burn Factory Road. It's been in my family for 50, 60 years. I met the Gambino and Carrie Myers. I feel they're very responsible, respectable people. I, well, first of all, when they mention, when it's mentioned about the fact that they want to have a business, whatever, I still haven't figured out, there's a business behind me. Does Pine Road not hear the gravel, the dump trucks? It's at 385, I believe, Burn Factory. There's a business. It is beyond noisy. It's scary noisy at times. Anyway, the dump trucks, it comes past up and down by Pine Road, and Pine Road is not as narrow as these people would have you believe. It's wider than that. But anyway, I'd also like to say that as far as traffic, there's, the lady said, about 100 cars? There's 100 cars a day that come off of Burn Factory heading back to Snowden at 55 miles an hour, and I know because I walk my dog and I have nearly been run over. And around 5 o'clock, you go near, you do not go near that road. And I've recently found out they're heading back to Snowden, they're cutting through. It's quite a mess. I believe that's probably all I have to say. Oh, I do know that they've had a couple of dinner parties. How do I know this? Because I friended Carrie on Facebook. Other than that, they have friends come in and out. I've never heard or seen anything, cars or whatever, so that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes?
If anyone else would like to comment? Anyone? Anyone at all? Mr. Gambino, Ms. Myers, if you'd like an opportunity to address any of the comments you've heard, I'll give you that opportunity. You don't have to. Yes, move it up, please. The viewing public at home will not be able to hear your comments.
We appreciate everybody who has come out tonight and addressed their concerns. I respect the fact that we live in a community where people care about their homes and about maintaining their quality of life. So whichever way this goes, I just really appreciate that everybody took the time, you know, to invest in the idea. I don't think that there are many questions that need to be answered by us, you know, certainly concerns. One thing I will, I don't think that got addressed by us, was the issue perhaps with the water table, because we're going to require restroom trailers to be brought in. There will be no catering on premises, which means there will be no dishwashing, there will be no overnight stays. There should be minimal impact on the water table. Quite a few of these toilet trailers actually have water tanks that come in filled as you rent them. So we don't anticipate an impact on the water table. And then the only other issue is with regards to development of property that is adjacent to ours. Many of the concerns tonight have been increased traffic, and so if the properties back there end up being developed, that is a permanent increase in cars that will utilize Pine Road and Burn Factory Road, as opposed to, you know, on the weekends, one day a week when you're going to have an event. So those are really the only things that we have. But again, thanks, everybody, for their time.
Thank you. All right. Any questions of staff? Anyone? All right, we'll close the public comment portion of our discussion. Stonewall?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is my home, too, and of course, I live in the Stonewall District and certainly enjoy the peacefulness of the area and the quiet serenity. But I think a couple of things have resonated with me this evening, and the gentleman who spoke about picking up trash along the road. That's a common occurrence on rural roads, and not only does it come from people that are going to a dinner party or to a festival-type party, but it is an ongoing issue. So with that, a couple of the things that being said, I would like to recommend for approval, conditional use permit, 0918, for Carrie Myers and Matthew Gambino for the special event in the rural area zoning district, for a couple of reasons, if I may. First of all, the CUP approval isn't allowed use in a rural setting. And our PC, our planning commissioners, have addressed, I believe, a variety of the concerns that hopefully the neighbors have, and that was to be able to close the event at 10 o'clock with everyone leaving the facility by 11. The only concern I have, and while I have been out to visit the property, is that the CUPs typically will move along once the property is sold. They go with the property. So I guess that would be a concern for me, is that once the property is sold, that the CUP would be reevaluated at that time, if someone else wished to continue on with that. So my motion would be contingent upon that.
On the CUP expiring at transfer?
Yes, sir.
Is that... I'm not trying to put words in your mouth.
No, that is, that is the condition, that it be reevaluated upon the property being sold to another owner, that we may not have a same owner as we have with what I'm hearing your neighbors complimenting you on, and so I think it would be helpful to have staff reevaluate it. Is that something we can do?
Mr. Chairman, I think the only concern, I think, from a staff perspective on that is, or the primary concern, is how staff would know to reevaluate it. We're not automatically told of property transfers, and then what would that process look like? We don't really have a process for undertaking that. If the supervisor's motion is simply to allow it to expire and be reapplied for, that's not been the typical practice, but it could be here. That would practically speaking work, but I don't know how we would institute a reevaluation, to know to institute a reevaluation process.
Would you like to amend your motion?
I don't know that there's any other way we can do it, then.
You could place a condition on the permit that says if the property changes hand that the permit expires.
Okay.
And the new owner would have to come in to reapply, to reestablish the use, if that was their desire.
And you all would have no objection to that? Okay.
Is that your motion?
Yes, I would like to change it, as Mr. Tierney has suggested.
So the motion is to approve with an added condition that the CUP would expire upon transfer of ownership. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're looking for a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. This is your discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McCarthy.
I know it's unusual at this juncture, but this discussion's raised a question in my mind that I'd like, if the applicants are amenable, if they could answer for me. Is that allowable at this point?
It's way outside of the norm. Why don't you state your question?
So my question is, is there a current use of the property commercially that you are able to take advantage of from a financial standpoint, some type of agricultural use, that would allow you to maintain the property as it's currently situated? So is there a farming activity or something going on that you're able to derive income from, or is this going to be the mode by which income is derived to help you maintain the property?
It's a byright use in ag. I mean, ag's a byright use in RA.
But my question is, is there currently a commercial use of the property that would supplement the income and allow you to do this without having to do this, or is this going to be the sole, anticipated sole income in order for you to allow you to maintain the property? Is there currently some type of agricultural endeavor going on in the property? Okay, thank you. Okay.
Really not enough fields to do anything.
No is a good enough answer.
So based on that answer, Mr. Chairman, my concern is, and it was pointed out earlier, is that the CUP was put in place primarily to allow agricultural, commercial endeavors to succeed in the county, where it's getting harder and harder to succeed as a farmer or an agricultural business person. The property's not currently being used for agricultural purposes, so therefore, is it really appropriate to apply a CUP to allow a business that's not really supplementing or helping continue an agricultural endeavor? You know, it's a question of, is this really fulfilling the purpose of the CUP versus just allowing another business to pop up in the middle of an agricultural zone? It's my concern, is that I don't see this really in the spirit of why the CUP was passed in the first place.
Understood.
Thank you, sir.
Further discussion? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, sitting here listening to the concerns of some of the residents there, I understand those concerns. We've heard those before. And while they were talking, I just happened to wonder about the impact that they say is going to take place, and I started listing the number of event centers in the Back Creek District alone, and I've come up with at least 12 so far. The reason I say that is because of those 12, I have yet to receive a second complaint from anybody that lived near those event centers, and some of them are on gravel roads, some of them on paved roads. So I think that the residents obviously have concerns, that they believe this is going to happen as far as diminishing the value of their homes. I have yet to talk to the commissioner of revenue where that actually happened, and I have checked. So, like I say, I understand the concerns, but in all, at least a dozen event centers in Back Creek, I have not seen any of those come to fruition, so.
Anyone else? Supervisor Dunn?
I have concerns, I have some concerns on this CUP. My wife and I were out there last night, and it was dark. The road is narrow, it is windy. It's about two-tenths of a mile from their entrance to Pine Road. Pine Road is a wider road. I was out there today, thank you, just to walk through property. My concerns are that on a 12-month or 10-month or et cetera, you have a lot of people on a small road. I might be more comfortable if they simply applied for a festival permit or something of that nature, to say that we can do this two, three, four times a year. I think that's a compromise between their desire as a property owner, to be able to do on their own property what they so desire, and adjacent property owners who are saying that essentially you have an activity there that is really not agricultural, as Mr. McCarthy had said. This property changed hands approximately a year plus ago, so there's no farming. It does have woods on it. It could be commercial. You could timber it, but that's not going to occur for a number of years. So I just have some concerns on the safety issue and the road issue, and the fact that it's not an existing farm. The applicants have been very gracious, very courteous. They were very helpful in answering questions, but with an unlimited CUP, I'm probably going to be able to vote, I probably will not be able to support it. If it had been for three or four over the course of a year, I might be able to support that, but I can't support this.
Further discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Taub.
So I'll support this application in terms, for two reasons. One, property rights, and I believe you should be able to do what you would like on your property. Two, I would much rather you have this special events facility, maintain your property, and not parcel off your land for additional housing developments, which we don't need in Frederick County right now. So for those two reasons, I will support this application.
Further discussion? Supervisor McCarthy?
I would just point out that approving a CUP doesn't prevent the subdivision of property for further development, so I don't see that as a good reason to approve a CUP in order to avoid further development. It may have some... It may have some type of indirect influence on development, but it doesn't prevent it. And again, I just go back to the fact that, you know, the CUP was not intended to be a event center promotion statute. It was meant to protect agricultural economy in the county, and I don't see this as inappropriate preservation of any agricultural economy that's currently existing on this property. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Anyone? Are you ready? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Nay.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy? Chair votes aye. The motion carries, and the CUP is approved as amended. Mr. Chairman, sir. Request for a commercial pump and haul, pin number 69A15A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request for a pump and haul permit for an existing non-conforming commercial structure. That structure is located at 1429 South Piper Road in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Property contains a 3,410 square foot restaurant, was built in 1941. If I can turn your attention to the map, on your left, you see where Warrensville Pike is, and a corner of South Piper Road is where the Corners Bar and Grill, which I think most of you from Frederick County are familiar with this establishment. There's a picture of the property that's applying for this pump and haul tonight. The existing system for waste disposal does not meet the current Health Department standards. The Health Department has concluded an onsite steward's disposal system could not be supported by this property. The property owner has been unable to obtain an off-site easement to allow for a disposal system. The property owner appears to have addressed the requirements of utilizing a pump and haul system for this property on South Piper Road. Property owner has also established a relationship with First Choice Septic System, and the decision for the Board of Supervisors on this permanent pump and haul system is requested. For the record, Mr. Chairman, the property owner and applicant are here to answer any questions you or any board members may have on this pump and haul permit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Mr. Chairman, are there any? Thank you, sir. Applicant, anything you'd like to add? Just type your name and Magisterial District, please.
Catherine Garcha, Back Creek. If we could put that photo up again, I'd like to point out that there is a portion of that property that we actually do not own. No, one more, sorry. Okay, it's not going to show it. If you take the diamond part on the bottom, that's where property would be that could actually perhaps have a disposal system. It doesn't, it's not owned by me, it's owned by family that has acres of property and has in that district for a really long time. And I was not able to obtain a right of way to that. That said, the property being around since 1941, it's an understatement. I'm sure everybody's familiar with it in one way or the other. I purchased it with my husband 13 years ago, and it was a direct transfer of ownership from the previous owners. So there was not an issue of the septic service. We felt, we went along the same guidelines that they did with hours of operation and how it was conducted as a restaurant. He passed away right after Thanksgiving in 2015. I had no desire to continue at the time and tried to actually sell the property. Was unable to do so, and after time had gone by and my life situation had changed, I thought, I own the property outright, and I think that the county deserves to have the place back. A lot of people miss it, so do I. And in the capacity, we want to reopen it, it's more family oriented. It'll actually be less intrusive than it ever was before, and that's the idea. We want to open this up because we want the community to have the place back. There's no other ulterior motive, just it's been there, let's keep it there. The reason I couldn't continue as it was, too much time had gone by, so I wasn't grandfathered in anymore. That's my mistake, I'm sorry I didn't keep it open, so that we have to have a discussion. But when your life changes that drastically, sometimes you have to think you might need to move on, while I'm ready to move back and still move on. So I appreciate your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, if you would. Are there any questions? Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry, Mr. Dunn does have a question.
Yes.
First of all, I'm sorry, I'm sorry your husband passed away.
Thank you very much.
I talked to staff, and that's a bad situation. Is this business here a business which is your livelihood?
I have a full-time employment with Shenandoah Westminster Canterbury, Shenandoah Valley. I gained employment there two years ago, last July. Enjoy it very much. I continued, I want this to be more of a family business, which it kind of was before. My family situation has changed. Found love again, remarried, have a daughter, stepdaughter, wants to come aboard. We're going to hire people that had helped us in the past and keep the family orientation there. I will do books, I will do anything on my part-time, but I still desire to continue my employment with Westminster Canterbury. It's been very good for me. Sorry. I talk a lot.
You say you've had this for 13 years. Were you aware of the method that you're, that has been operating on before your husband passed away?
Again, this was something where we did have a relationship with First Choice Septic. They did the cleaning of the septic system from before we even had it, and continue to. We never had to have it re-inspected because it had been changed over, if that's what you're asking me.
I understand that your septic went under the road and into another area.
It went to a pit, I believe.
Okay, but you knew that when you were operating before?
Well, this was something my, I'm sorry, my husband was, I did the books. I don't really know a lot about things when it comes to septic issues. He was a plumber for a long time, but there was no need from the county to have to come and inspect something since it was just a transfer of ownership, once the deed was transferred.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. This is Back Creek.
Mr. Chairman, I know there's some concern about approving pump and haul permits. I do think that in circumstances such as this, there are mitigating reasons why something like this should be approved in order for the continuation of a business that's been there for many years. And unfortunately, the circumstances dictated that it closed for a while. But in talking with the gentleman from the Health Department, generally, if it stays within the same ownership, if it would close, open back up, that they do try to work with the owners to make sure that it can continue. Unfortunately, in this instance, the owner ran against the Health Department when they determined that the health system that had been approved and been in use for many years was not going to be acceptable. But given that information and talking with the Health Department, I've moved that we approve the application for a permanent pump and haul sewage disposal system for Catherine Garcha at 2050 South Piper Road.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Thank you. Ms. Garcha, I respect that you and your husband operated this business for so many years and with very little, if any, complaints in the way that you've handled the business. And I think you're as good as you're worth as far as how you're going to move forward with it. My one concern would be, once you're no longer the proprietor of the business, you know, how will this facility be used? What will be the impact of the, a new owner of the property? So my only concern would be what happens when the next owner of the facility comes into ownership. I would like to, I could support something like this if I knew that it was for the lifetime or use of Ms. Garcha, because I respect the fact that she's run this well in the past, and her family has done a good job at running this. But I would be concerned about having a facility like this, again, run with the land, without some type of reaplication for a future use.
Further discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn?
I have similar concerns with Mr. McCarthy. From what I understand, this has been around for a long time, and the applicant made the comment that sewage was going into a pit. I appreciate the fact that they came to the county and said, fine, what do we need to do to make this good and viable? So that's a plus. From what I understand, the current disposal is a older concrete situation, and over time, things fail. So I had a conversation with the Health Department earlier today and with staff, and the questions that I was posing were, how do you monitor it so that if you have a small leak at the bottom, because over time, concrete can erode? If you have a flueance going in on the top, a certain volume, but you have a small leak going out the bottom, you wouldn't even know about that. And if that's going into an aquifer, that's a problem for me. I'm sympathetic to the fact that you're a widow trying to bring this back, I'm glad you're remarried. But my concerns like Mr. McCarthy are, I might approve it for your life only, but I'm not looking to go and go beyond that. We have lots of these in the county, and so I just have concerns on that.
Further discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I understand the concerns that have been expressed here, that are the same concerns that have been expressed many times when we've talked about pump and haul permits. But here we're talking about commercial business. And if you look at the specifications for a pump and haul installation, there are two tanks, and if they're installed properly, actually, the sewage would back up into the building before it overflowed on the ground. There is an alarm system built into the system. And so I think this is a potential solution to shutting down a viable business. I find it hard to tell these people that they own a building, they're going to pay taxes on the building, but yet they have no way to recoup the investment they have in that building. I just don't think it's right. Since we have an alternative here, there's a viable alternative. There are about 300 pump and haul permits in Frederick County, to my knowledge and talking with the Health Department. I don't know that any of them are in a condition of failing. They have helped out numerous people, whether it's the residents, whether it's commercial. And so, given the concerns that I'm hearing, I still think this is a viable solution and the only alternative at this point to keep that commercial business viable. If the other supervisors have concerns about pump and hauls, then I would love to have a discussion on how they feel like that could be improved on, except to vote no, and take someone's business and basically eliminate it. So that's why I feel that this pump and haul permit should be approved for this particular instance.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McCarthy?
I would just reiterate that actually I agree with Supervisor Lofton, that I think it's important that we find a way to make it work for this business. I agree with you, I think we need to find a way to make it work for this business. But pump and haul are sort of case-by-case, it's a discretionary decision of the board. And in this case, I would say in my discretion, I would grant a pump and haul for Ms. Garcha's use. My concern is, what happens when Ms. Garcha's no longer using the property? This is another one of those things that runs with the land, that once we've granted it, it's there forever and ever, for better and worse, unless we make a decision to, you know, let it expire at some point, or come back for reconsideration at some point. So much like the conditional use permit that was just passed, I think it's a good way to allow a businessperson like Ms. Garcha to continue the family business, but yet protect the county in future days to allow for discretion, once again, to be given by the board for a future use.
Anyone else?
Mr. Lofton, my concerns are that if this were a brand-new piece of land, we would say no to this and say, fine, go find it someplace else. But because it's been grandfathered in, because it's been here for so long, that's where, if you're looking to make something to work, I'm not looking to put them out of business. But the health issue is a concern. So, you know, maybe you say to them, if they have violation, you know, two violations, they're out. I mean, or something of that nature. My concern's about the failure underneath, that's the concern.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
To the motion, please.
We talked about failure. These pump and haul permits are inspected by the Health Department every three years. And if there's any hint that these permit, that these pump and haul installations have been altered in any way, that makes them unusable, or if they're not working, the Health Department will shut it down. The county doesn't have to wait for that. But again, I say that in particular instances such as this, the applicant has put a lot of time and money into continuing the business that they operated for many years, and this is the only viable solution at this point, to keep that commercial business operating. And again, that's why I think it's important that in this instance, that we approve this pump and haul permit.
Anyone else? Are you ready? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
I'm going to pass.
You're going to do what?
Nay.
Thank you. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries, and the pump and haul is approved. That will bring us to Board Liaison Reports. Vice Chairman Lofton?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I have two reports to give. The Extension Leadership Council met on October 3rd, and they announced that they have a new Frederick County 4H agent, Dylan Chappens. Dylan began their work, began her work at Frederick County in April 2018, has been very active in the 4H activities all summer. Also, this week, October 7th through the 13th, is celebrated as National 4H Week. Most important information coming out of that committee, not that it isn't all important, but the following 4Hers were tapped into the Virginia 4H All-Stars at State 4H Congress in June. Now, this is the highest award a 4H participant can achieve. Those young folks who achieve this honor are Gabby Osborne, Berkeley Frank, Austin Dunsmore, Emma Sheets, Dalton Earhart, and Zachary Harner. So I know that Harrison Sears, congratulations goes out to those young folks for the hard work and dedication that they've put in to attain this honor. I would also say that the ELC continued to work on their five-year update of their situation analysis, and a community survey, and key informal interviews conducted throughout 2018 have identified 10 key issues that the Extension Office will concentrate on. Moving on to the next one, the Social Services Board met yesterday, October 9th, to report that the new area for expansion of staff due to Medicaid expansion is nearing completion, and staff are being hired at this point. I would like to point out Mr. Janney's article that highlighted the increasing adult protective services caseload that is being experienced by the Social Services Department and taxing staff, and we appreciate all the work that they do to protect all those in need. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Any others? Board Liaison Reports, any others? Thank you. That'll bring us to Citizen Comments. The opportunity for you folks to bring us anything that you would like to bring to our attention, would anyone like to address the board on any issue whatsoever? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Trout?
Just a brief comment. I would like to congratulate this board on the approval of a supplemental appropriation for over $9 million to address the transportation projects in our county, the amendment that we approved earlier this evening. This shows that we can be proactive and not reactive when it comes to growth in our county. It's unfortunate that even though we are able to have this foresight when it comes to transportation, we are unable to do that when it comes to education. And I would hope that in the future, we would consider our county's growth when looking at future school projects in the same way we considered our county's growth when looking at transportation projects. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. CUPs always come before us, and I always, it's heart-wrenching, you have folks that want to do things, and you have other folks over here that live in your community, and I see it all the time. I'm not an advocate of a CUP. I am an advocate of being able to do what you'd like to do on your property, as long as it doesn't affect your neighbors. I mean, I can say that, and certainly I live in a neighborhood where they wouldn't want me to have a buffalo on there, it's my property, but it was, you know, that would be kind of out of context for my area. But I'd really like to see this board take a look with planning on CUPs and see if we can get a better handle on exactly what we're doing. I just feel like it's so wide open. I just feel like it's so wide open right now that we're, we're opening the door to a lot of things that maybe we don't want to do with conditional use permits in Frederick County. That's my personal opinion, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McCarthy?
I would just like to say I wholeheartedly support that, Bob. I would support us taking a look at that, because I couldn't agree with you more on all of that.
Mr. Tierney?
For what it's worth, we've asked the planning staff to do just exactly that, so hopefully we'll...
Thank you, Mr. Tierney.
Well done.
Keep us informed, and I'd like to be on your committee or whatever.
Pretty reactive, we appreciate it.
Yes, indeed.
Anyone else? Vice Chairman Lofton?
Chairman, I move for adjournment.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I pose no. Stand adjourned. We thank everyone for their time, attention, and input.